All right, this is the April 20th special meeting of the Town of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. Chair tonight is Jeff Richard. Staff includes Diane Glombowski, Bruce Lofgren, and Nina. This is a workshop format. There is not an opportunity to address the commission tonight.
So I'll call the Planning and zoning special meeting to order. First item roll call, it looks like every commissioner is here except for Kevin Pitfall. In order all business, we first item on the agenda, still going over the zoning text amendments, updates. Now turn it over to Diane and we'll go through each, each one of these, the changes. And if there are any other comments, you can bring them up, but it's mainly to address the changed section. mature in yellow.
Right, I gave you a list of draft changes and the items that are highlighted in yellow are the changes from the last time you reviewed this document. So what we can do is we can go through the actual document and we can show you the, the changes that we did based on your comments. If you have any additional comments, you know, you can feel free to, to make them at this time. But let's go down to number two, which is. Was here, yes. We talked about the alcoholic beverage production definition and you just wanted to get, I'll take out that purpose of processing grapes, grains, or other fruits. And just, so I just added production of wine, beer, and spirits.
On what page are you on?
Two.
Two.
Number two.
Number two.
You don't know what page that is in the package.
It's page two to three in the.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Susan, it's seventeen.
Oh, great, thanks.
Seventeen.
I don't see, I don't see a number online.
Um, it's just counting on the.
Up on the top left.
Yeah, I see it now, thanks.
I've got a, I'm using a printout.
Okay. So that's, that's what we did for that definition. Are you guys okay with that? Um, the next one was.
Three.
This is the, number three is the height. And so what we did was we added salt box to that definition. Um, we did the, and these diagrams have changed. I'll show you the diagrams. We changed the, how you measured the A-frame structure, basically three quarters up the disc, up the, from the average finish grade. And then we made sure we added, that it, the height includes up to the all rooftop equipment, screening, fencing, and any other structures on the roof. And you also talked about how would somebody know to whether they meet the exception to that. I usually don't like adding sections into definitions, but in this case I did just so that they know they can go to that section to see if they meet a exemption for that height. And then we.
We're gonna change those, all the diagrams to.
Right.
Here's that you, on the new page three then.
Right. So this is what we did. Jeff actually drew some of these. Um, and then I, I added a few more to his drawings. I don't know if this makes sense to everybody, if there's something that's really not clear. We'll actually have these drawn professionally after, after it gets approved. So.
Do we, oh, sorry.
Go on.
Um, I'm just curious if we really have A-frames.
Well, we, we could.
I can think of one in town.
Yeah, there's one on.
There's one on my street, actually.
There's one on Lamb's, Lambtown Road.
Pretty infrequent.
Right, okay, all right.
Can I, just one question here. So the gable hip and the mansard roof. Are we assuming that the mansard is being built on?
Are you talking about gambrel or mansard?
Well, I'm, the, the mansard roof. Or is that, are we looking from the street view or is this a?
The mansard roof would have tho, that type of roof design around all four sides.
Okay.
The gambrel, the gambrel has it, I think, only on two sides.
Yeah, but here we have a mansard. You can't have a mansard. In fact, we have examples of a mansard, which is a true mansard, which is exactly like a gambrel, but four-sided.
Right, right.
And in this case, it looks like we're not giving that any credit.
Yeah, that was my thought. I thought that we were gonna give them some credit because that roof line sort of brings it down. Is that right, Hal?
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
We talked about that and I went back and looked at a whole bunch of other zoning regs on how they measured it. Um, and I would say ninety-five percent of them measure it to the deck line because that's a simple, simple, um.
Well, I would say if, if in fact, it's a, the devil's in the details here. Is that, one thing, the thing I mentioned was that we need a little more, a little more definition in the, regarding the angle of the mansard or the change in angles of the gambrel. Because you can really play that. In this case, this sort of with a mansard is assuming the sort of cheapo. It's actually a square, a flat top building and they put a little trim around the top and carpet.
Right, right.
I, I think Hal is, you're absolutely right. I've, actually, they look terrible.
It's, it's sort of, I always talk about the Mr. Potato Head architecture, you just gotta stick things on. And it's, so for a fake mansard, I think that's, that's probably appropriate. But if it's more like a true mansard where the, at the deck line, the roof, the, the footprint at the deck line is substantially less than it is from the four walls farther down, then they should get some credit. Because from the street, the impact is much less. And especially if it's a true mansard where there's actually another peak up on the inside. Instead of being a dead flat roof or sometimes you do that and it's actually just the roof screen.
So what if, what if the man, what if you allowed that a little extra height where the mansard roof um, was the one full story? So that the roof, like I think on Three Water Street, isn't the mansard the full story?
It's that, it's the full story and it's more like a true mansard where it doesn't have much of an over, it has a minor overhang. It's not a, it's not tack dorm, it's built in. So the roof line, of course, it's got tremendous dormers on it too. So maybe you need to define that a bit too. Because you start putting enormous dormers on it and it becomes a square building.
Right. See, that's what, that's what happens when, and how many times is, yeah, how many times is this going to?
This, this could really be a thing just because that's how power. So. Well, maybe. I think it needs a little more definition as to what it is you're talking about. At what point does mansard become what we're thinking of as a gambrel, which gives you, you know, a half of the slanted part is the building height. Maybe it isn't that much. I think that's probably good. But you should, if it's a full story, I think you should get some credit for it. If in fact, at the deck line, it's more than X amount smaller than the floor plate below. Because from the street, it will appear that way.
So could you draw up some kind of diagram of what you're thinking about?
Yeah, I'll take that on.
Okay.
Yeah, because I think it's, you've got some, I'll try and make it absolutely simple as possible because I know you want it to be that simple.
Right, right.
Play this when you have like a gambrel roof and how, for that lower section of the gambrel, how vertical is that? We kind of need to define it, otherwise it's just gonna be straight up and down. Or hang out a little bit and be a couple of degrees off and covered with shingles and they'll say, well, it's a gambrel roof. Well, it's not what we meant.
Yeah. Okay Diane, didn't you, didn't you start the conversation with saying that you reviewed other zoning and how they do it? Are we drifting off into being inconsistent with our neighbors and other towns?
I didn't look at exactly their surrounding towns, but I definitely looked at a lot of, a lot of them in Connecticut. And it was like, okay, measure it to the deck line, measure it to the.
It certainly seems like.
For me is. Oh, I, I would just say like it would both mostly be in the MDD that I would be, like I'd be look concerned at all here, so that's.
And that's why if we, when we get to the MDD, we sort of, that's one of the allowances or if you can, if you can review and get extra height under a special permit, is using something like a mansard roof where.
Okay.
It doesn't, you get the extra height, but it doesn't really look like the extra. So that's how we did the MDD.
All right, that kind of makes sense to me.
And Diane, what, what's the special permit? I mean, what, how do you get that?
Pass here.
Is that Kevin?
Yes, sorry. I came here late, I apologize.
That's all right. Um, special permit is an application, it goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Now it used to go to the zoning commission and it's a public hearing where you notify the, um, the people that own property within a hundred fifty feet of your property and it's a public hearing, so they're allowed to. And you have to make certain findings. Sure, it's just, it's just not if you meet the standard, you get approval. There's certain findings that have to be made.
And my point, right, and my point Diane was just that a building inspector for the town cannot grant that exception.
Right.
That's right, right. And with the special permit, you can also impose conditions that you might not be able to do with a site plan.
Got it, thank you very much.
So mansard, so everything else is pretty okay except for that mansard right now.
We actually have a, a, a concern about the dome. I know, I'm looking at the dome and saying, well, do we have any and do we care? I don't think we'll ever see anything like it in downtown, so maybe I should stop talking about it. The only time I've ever seen a shape like that is in a fabric. A stretch fabric, right?
Yep.
I don't expect we'll ever have or have reason to approve in downtown because it's not historic, so maybe we really shouldn't worry about that.
And there's no quant, there's no Quonset huts left, right?
Nope.
Well, we've had like domes for like, um, sports centers and stuff.
Yeah, that's right. Tennis bubbles.
No, this is, this isn't just for downtown, this is for the entire town.
You've got air buildings. Don't they still have those?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Sandbox, sandbox building, is that like that?
Yeah.
I think that's exactly the kind of thing we're thinking of. That's the stressed fabric over a frame.
Right.
They can look like that. And, um, playing devil's advocate here, from the street, except for looking at the face view, do we want to give it a little bit of extra room for a height just because you can fit one of those inside a peak roof frame? I mean, if you just kind of implant that in there. It's not a flat box. It's from the side, it looks pretty well trimmed.
Well, if you fit it in a peak roof, it probably comes up to where you're measuring the building height on a peak roof, I would say.
I'd agree with that.
Okay.
And then if we start doing, yeah, I think you're, yeah.
I just want to throw it out there. I'm actually okay with it just because I don't want to encourage this kind of building.
Right. So.
Okay. I'll do a sketch.
So what are we gonna do with the mansard? You're gonna draw up something?
I'll draw up something, we can take another look at it.
All right.
Be too crazy, but that'd at least be, it'll, it'll go side by side with the, the peak roof because it'll have some of the same features and a lot of dimension the same. Have that kind of it's then sort of thing. Make it advantageous to have a mansard, but because we, it would be nice to have, it's nicer to have a mansard than a square, but if it's all the same, then why would anybody bother? So.
Well, if you look at the peak roof and you look at the mansard, I mean, basically you're measuring the height to, you know, halfway up that roof on the peak roof and if you continued that mansard roof up, you're still ma, you're measuring it basically to the same point. So.
It could be, and I'm not disagreeing with that, except then you have to define what those angles are. Otherwise, the angle on that mansard roof are going to be pretty close to straight up and down.
Yeah. Okay, so if you do a minimum angle.
Or a percentage of, of something that's easy to calculate.
All right. Uh, oh, this one, we just added. Oh, I didn't yellow this one. We just, um, we just added technical.
Yeah.
To that def, to that, um, definition, we had medical scientific and we added technical to that. So that was number four.
Can, I'd like to add, ask a question on that though. When we consider a facility, are we thinking of building or could it be outside?
Facility could be one building, two buildings, um, outdoor area, it could be.
It could include outdoor areas.
Right, right.
Okay, that's all. No, I, because it, I, I think when you get into that, you may have some problems with its application, that's all. You know, if you're outside and you could have an activity that is noisy, you might want to have the ability to control that.
Um.
Doesn't affect the definition, just.
Okay, okay.
As long as you understand that.
This one, we just, we realized, I don't think this was brought up by, by you, but we realized when Jeff was asking what was a watercraft, it was like, well, a marine craft. Well, it could be just a watercraft, it doesn't have to be marine, so any type of boat.
Kayak.
Kayak that's on the water, doesn't really have to be marine. So I added, yes?
Can you, can you enlarge that a little bit?
Oh, sure, I think I, um.
Thank you. Oh, that's, that's way big. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. And then we just kept that same definition, laboratory, medical, scientific, technical there. Let's see, then we get down to, okay, this is in the MDD district, this is on page twenty-nine, if you're scrolling. Um, and it's also number seven, blue. We had a lot of discussion about the height in the MDD district last time. There was a lot of comments from the public. Um, I think we ended up with, let's pick a height and then look at that, the special permit requirements. That was one, I, one of the options, I think you, you talked about. So this is what I, we came up with, um. It's not, you know, we can discuss this tonight and see if, if you agree, if you want to change it, if, if there's something else you want to add. But, um, we went from, we went to a, kept the general height of thirty-five feet without a special permit in the MDD. So thirty-five feet is what you get. If it's an existing structure and you're raising it up, then you get that extra five feet. That's only for existing structures in the flood zone. Um, then if you want to increase it to a maximum of forty-five feet, you can, you can submit a special permit. There's certain findings that have to be made for all special permits and that's in section nine point four dash six of the zoning regulations. And then we added some additional requirements for special permits in the MDD. One is, um, we broke it down into parking requirements, um, public space requirements and building design. And we said that parking required for the MDD under section, whatever can be met entirely onsite without use of the validation program or off-site parking. So that's something we should discuss. If, if you think that if we give this extra height and all their parking has to be met onsite and whether you want a hundred percent of it or in the MDD that they're allowed to go fifty percent. Or do you want only the residential parking men onsite? Um, but again, if it's a hotel and there's no residential parking, would you allow a height and just say you don't have to meet any parking onsite? Um, if it's a mixed use project, what do you want for parking onsite? Well, that's something you should think about. And then we thought, okay, if we're giving them extra height, they should give something back and return to the public. So we thought about requiring public space. And this would be above and beyond what's required for, you know, their sidewalks. Um, any private outdoor space, anything needed for circulation or landscaping. Those requirements should be met and this public space should be above and beyond. We came up with a definition for public space because this public space is also mentioned as a requirement in the MVC in the MTC districts, but there's no definition for public space. Deb, you want to explain what's been happening with a few of the applications too for that?
Sure. So both, as Diane said, both in the MTC, which is the Boquonic Bridge area and MVC, which is downtown. Um, there are requirements for public space. Um, in the MVC, it's ten percent of the lot area if your lot is over two acres and downtown, it's fifteen percent if your lot's over two acres. Um, we've been reviewing a couple of applications, one in each of those zones. And in both cases, the applicant is confusing public space with open space. And it's wanting to designate an area that might be wetlands, might be alleged outcrop as the public space. Um, so, so we do, we definitely need a definition. I mean, we've been pointing people to the guidelines to say this is, no, this is what we mean. Some sort of streetscape thing or street furniture or something that's very easily accessible to someone walking by on the sidewalk. Um, it would be, it'd be easy, uh, usual, it'd be easier if there were a definition. Um, in addition to that, we're finding that percentages might be too high for some of these projects to meet. Um, in a couple of cases, there's, in one case, there's a piece of property that's, I think fifty percent wet, yet it's eleven acre and they're required to give us more than an acre of public space. So we want to talk about that later on as well. Percentage is a bit too high for a project that is just reusing an existing building as opposed to what we kind of envisioned, which is, you know, wiping out the Penny's Plaza and rebuilding from scratch. But we'll get to that later.
So, and then the third item is building design. This gives you a little ability to say, well, we want some more architectural design or something that, um, doesn't make the building look so high, such as the mansard roof or other decorative orders, trims or other architectural features. So if we have it in the regulations, you have the ability to say, and, and I think we didn't deal with design so much because when we were going through the regulations, we said, well, we have the HDC already. Why do we need to look at design in the, in the, um, Mystic Historic District? But I don't think they look at height and how, and how that building relates to the adjacent, the streetscape. And so that's where you can come in. I think they look at the building design and the, and the materials of that design, of the building and everything like that. But they don't look at the, the streetscape and the proportionality of that building to the other buildings. So, um, so that's where we are. That's our proposal right now. Um, so if you want to discuss it.
All right, I think just a flat fifteen percent is, is an awful lot of space that be asking. I kind of agree with that. But in terms of not so much the percentage of space or how much space, what we would like to see, I wonder if we can just do a little, allow them to overlap outdoor. You're saying must not, it shall not include private outdoor patios with, associated with restaurants or dwelling units. Well, I agree with dwelling units because your private outdoor patio, the dwelling unit is private, it's fenced off most of the time, you can't see it. Outdoor patio, if we make sure that the, it's not segregated too much and it doesn't have six foot shrubs if instead it has three foot or three and a half foot or something like that, so we get, kind of get a feeling for credit for people sitting outside, which we want them to do. Add so much life to a downtown to have that kind of thing. So I think if you, maybe even as much as fifty percent, if you have outdoor seating for your restaurant, that would be fifty percent of the outside area, the usual, the public space, that just encourages people to do both those things. I do think it should, fifteen percent or it's still too much. I almost wonder if we should, it should be graduated, that the more space you have, the more up to, you know, up to one acreage, this much, beyond one acreage, that much. It kind of, the requirement goes down a little bit, so we're not asking for outrageous enough in space. We don't want to ask for an acre in space rotating the lot. Don't need that much. Or a half an acre of outdoor seating, you know, it's just, it's just not that, don't need that much. But we would like them to consider outdoor seating if they weren't considering. Uh, some other places I've seen, I just remember in, uh, where was it? Downtown Palo Alto, two different places. Highly regulated and in their remodeling, they sort of opened up the front that had been storefront and just moved the front of the building back fifteen feet to put some seating outside on the sidewalk, still sidewalks weren't that big, so that's, it was still within the footprint. This would give credit to that and it's a, it's a wonderful thing to add life to, but a downtown. Be able to walk by and have separated, but not too separated, a bunch of seating. It's, and see, and talk to people who were there and stay with them.
I'm not sure if, um, I would agree that seating associated with a restaurant where you have to actually go in and sit and order something is what we're, we're, we're thinking about public space. I think, um, tables or benches or whatever, where you don't have to go and order something, I think that's what we're thinking of.
Diane, do you know then, anything like that that exists currently that we can compare it to?
Um, New York City has a lot, has a lot of spaces. Um New York City has a lot, has a lot of spaces, um public spaces.
Are they like little mini parks that you can just put a bench or two in?
Right, there are little plazas, there are mini parks, there are. A place in New York where they put out the little bistro tables with the chairs, um. You don't have to buy anything, nobody's selling you anything, um.
And yes, yeah, so I think in in downtown Mystic, we're thinking of, you know, maybe a a wider. A wider sidewalk than what's required and and installing some sort of street furniture that folks can can use. Um I think, I think Diane's right in terms of patios, for restaurants, quite often you're required to buy something to sit there. So, so having something, you know, just outside that patio, that's for for anybody who wants to sit down.
Um in front of the bookstore, that's a, that's a plaza.
Yeah.
Up by the um, the um Johnny, John Kelly's.
Statue, yeah.
Little plaza, people can go and sit and eat their pizza or. Or just hang out and watch people.
No, I I I think it's, I think it's a wonderful thing. I just don't think one should completely preclude the other. I I just wanna give a little, a little bit of credit, maybe it's only twenty-five percent credit or something like that. Just to encourage people to also have outdoor seating as part of the restaurant.
So you'd be sure if we need to do that in downtown Mystic these days, um. I, if you look at what's happening in Factory Square in the courtyard there. Those restaurants are basically taking over that whole courtyard area and taking away the public space from the actual. You know, residents that live there. Um does a resident that wants to come down and read the newspaper on a bench have to go into one of the restaurants? Areas to do that.
Well, it could be regulated the other way around too, is if you're going to start to do that. Given X amount of. Restaurant seating, you must provide. Some percentage of that be just public.
Right.
That way, one, one will regulate the other a little bit.
But isn't it kind of a problem because you have so many discreet businesses and situations? And that here we're gonna put in some requirements, which I think is a great idea. But there isn't really a plan for that whole district and aren't you gonna end up sometimes with maybe discreet bits of things? That don't make sense, um don't connect like they could. I like the problems we've had even with access to the water and things. Um and I know this, there, I don't know, coming up with a proposal for that whole area would be. At least seems to me extremely difficult. But yeah, maybe some incentive to tie in to existing uh public spaces or access points. Or means of travel. I don't, you know, I'm not sure how to do it. I think it's a great goal. But to make it so it works is hard.
It it's only used to get a higher building height.
Right, 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 right.
It's not an everyday thing, so it's an exception.
Hmm, so somebody, somewhat, there's not many large properties down there that are. But there are some properties that potentially will tear down some of those buildings and. And redevelop their sites um that are pretty large. If they want that extra height. They, that's, you know, that's sort of giving something back. To the public.
As long as it, if it makes sense, you know.
Right, right, and that's where, that's where um, that's where you would come into play with you, with reviewing the project.
Yeah, this would be a special permit, so you could say this doesn't make any sense and you can't have the extra height.
Right. Yep. Yeah, that, in that case, I would think because they are getting the extra height. They ought to really provide something valuable in this case for the public.
That's what I would, if you reworded the first couple of words there and put space available to the public in the form. Of plazas rather than saying public space might make more sense. And then it wouldn't, then it's obvious that it doesn't include closed off restaurant tables.
Right.
But the, the art association has some benches next to their walkway for the. Access to the water that's available to the public and a lot of people use that. I I think that's the type of thing we'd be looking for.
I think um if we put some things about connecting to the um, to the sidewalk or the public realm. The existing public realm or something like that.
Yep.
But this is, is good enough examples without getting overly specific on requirements.
Right.
It's probably adequate word.
Would um something like the walkway that goes behind, you know, that uh public access area? That goes behind the uh.
Central Hall.
Thank you, whoever that was. That would be like, would we be thinking of something like that?
Well, that's the other question I had, um. What, non-water dependent uses require public access. So would you want this to be above and beyond what's required for a non-water dependent? Being on the, on the water? Like, in case, just the, the case of Central Hall, I mean, they had to, they were required to put that. Eck in because it's a non-water dependent use.
Cause it's a non-water dependent, oh right, I see, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's on, but it's not water dependent.
So they had to put public access in order to get that use on, on that site. Um so, somebody that comes to, comes and builds a hotel on the water there. Um they're going to have to provide public access along the water i- in order to build that hotel there, cause it's a. Non-water dependent use.
But. Access could have been a, a five-foot walkway.
Right.
Or wanna give them credit for putting in ten feet or fifteen feet plus benches. So, it's above and beyond just access.
Right, that's what I think you have to decide whether, whether this public space. Um is above and beyond what's required for like a non-water dependent use.
And those would be conditions in special permit.
Right, right.
You'd have to address them.
Right.
I think my tendency would be to. To be more conservative and that if we're going to allow it, allow it in the special permit, I suppose. I could be swayed.
So this requires a special.
Yeah.
Right.
So you'd have to address them.
With respect to the parking.
Right.
We, we always, we have here, you're kind of lumping together validation or off-site parking. Shouldn't those two be thought of as kind of two different things? I mean, especially downtown Mystic, it's, it's almost impossible to provide on-site parking. But if they wanna buy a lot someplace else or provide some other parking someplace else, not just a validation program. I think that would be a good thing.
How far away it was.
That's true, that's true.
And off-site parking could also be like a lease for a year or whatever our regulations allow.
I think I should say off-site parking within the MDD.
Why, why do we care?
Because if it only lasts a year, then we're gonna lose that, or if they have to get bust in, become someone else's problem.
Right.
But if you're on the border.
We, we don't want them providing off-site parking in no link.
I think there's standard, I think there's standards, there are standards in the parking section that say within a certain.
I think it's five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet.
Right.
Is that, it's actually, considering the way downtown Mystic is, is that too small a distance? Five hundred feet is pretty modest, that, that's, it's a nice distance if you've got it, but. Well, we only care that they can provide some parking someplace that's walking distance to Mystic.
And when you got a basement, rooftops. Yeah, but this is only giving, it only affects somebody that wants to build a tall building.
That's it.
So what do you think of the heights?
I think it's, we have, it's realistic.
Thirty-five and forty-five, you think that's good? If they wanna go above forty-five, then they can do a house.
They gotta go to ZBA.
They could go to ZBA and do a variant.
I think thirty-five is good. I was driving around there and I looked at it and it's like fifteen feet, let, you know, less than fifty. I think that's a good place to start.
I agree.
Diane, where did uh Three Water Street end up as far as height?
Um I have it right here.
Five, including the screening according to your handout.
That was from average finish grade.
Yep.
Yeah, I measured everything from, so it was about fifty feet.
A little less, yeah, that includes the screening.
That I included the screen even though.
Did I include the air conditioning units that stick above the screening?
No. So um, yeah, it's about fifty feet, a little less than fifty.
So by th- these new regulations, that building would not be as high as it is.
It would be maximal of forty-five feet. Yeah.
Right, if if they were granted a special permit and addressed these items.
Right, so they would have to give some kind of public space. Well, the deck is to get to the actual. The actual stores. If they had made a bigger deck, maybe, right?
Party on the roof.
You got a party on, yeah, no, but if it's public space, then you're exactly right. In fact, what I was kind of pushing for was a much bigger deck. So there wouldn't be any squeeze points.
Right.
In this case, we could have mandated it.
So that's where this gives you some, some ability to have some options.
Gives you guidance.
Okay, so we're okay with the heights, um. Parking. I, I don't know, I don't know what, what you wanna do with the parking.
I agree with um. I don't know if it was Hal that said that as far as off-site parking. I mean, if they can get another lot and lease a lot or something, I don't think that should be our business.
Okay, so maybe just the validation.
I think, yeah, I would agree, yeah, the. Validation is what I, I believe.
Yeah, we've used that validation program ten times over. Right, the validation program, though, guys, we're full. We know that. There's no algorithm. Why, why do we keep pressing on the validation program?
I agree.
We're full.
Yep, over full.
Yep.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'm like, I'm like Hal on that um, that Grotton apartment building, you know, on, on parking here. Hal's great on that apartment building. They gotta finish that thing. The parking, we just have to stop. It's, it's, I'm not saying we stop it, but we, we can't continue the lie as we say, right? Doesn't work.
I agree.
Now, do we need to better define, cause we're saying, yeah, they find a lot someplace else, then that's fine, but this is. It says can be met entirely on site. Does that need just a little more tweak of definition of what on-site means?
No, I'll just, I'll just erase, um, oh, okay, yeah, entirely on site, okay, so I'll, I'll reword that. But do you want there, in the MDD, they're allowed to go down to fifty percent of the required? So is that what you want? So if they, they're required based on the table. Thirty spaces and in, in the MDD, they're required fifth, uh they're allowed a fifty percent reduction. So if fifteen spaces are met on site or. Without the use of the validation program. Um then they can get the height, that's one of their. Is that right? So you're, you're still allowing that fifty percent reduction. That's what I wanna know.
On site.
On site.
Yeah.
And is there a distinction between resident? Potential and commercial?
Um, not for the required parking or if it's met on site?
Yeah, no, that was just a question. I don't know. I'm just, I'm wondering, because I mean, it would seem like there's a difference, you know? I know when we were doing Central Hall, how difficult it was finding spaces.
Yeah.
That's sort of critical if someone's living there, you know?
Right.
And I guess it's critical for anybody, even a business.
Well, th- then that's the other thing for the, on the next page, when we deal with the density, you allowed um. The density to go down from two thousand square feet per dwelling unit to one thousand square feet per dwelling unit. If the parking requirement was met on site, um. And we took that to mean just the residential parking requirement was met on site. So I wanna make sure that's clarified also, but we'll get to that after.
Were you gonna leave the off-site parking in there though?
Yes.
I guess my question would be, if somebody comes in and they have some deal for off-site parking, do they need to own it? Do they need to have a lease in perpetuity, you know, cause all of a sudden they built their monster building? And oops, we can't get that parking anymore. Yeah, it's gonna work.
Right now, they don't need to own it and they don't need to have a lease in perpetuity, um. To find the section of the regs.
Who would be leasing something in perpetuity anyway, but.
Yeah, no, exactly, but it's like, otherwise you don't really have, couldn't, you know, have.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, no, that's uh.
Yeah, after the fir- after the first year, there's no parking.
Okay, the location, the parking spaces are within five hundred feet walking distance of the lot or use. Which they serve and are within the MDD and then for ownership. Such space shall preferably be in the same ownership as the use which they serve. However, evidence of a lease of such space for a minimum term of one year. With automatic annual renewals shall be acceptable. Such lease shall be submitted to the town prior to the filing of the site plan and land records. And copies of annual renewals shall also be provided to the Office of Planning and Development Services. Further, the obligation to maintain the required number of spaces as set forth in section eight point two dash four is not diminished. By the leasing option permitted under this section. So it's a minimum of one year with automatic annual renewals. They're supposed to give us copies annually of the lease. And if they don't, what happens?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Ian, here's my point, which is why I asked the question, when they're going for the restaurants, are a, every single one of those spots marked? Is a signage in front of every one of those spots, like a handicap, mark that this can only be that particular development? Which it should be, in my opinion. So say they get a spot, say it's Factory Square and they get a spot somewhere else. And they basically, and say, I'm just picking DPI, every one of those spots should be marked, this is a Factory Square spot.
And no, no, it's not.
I know.
In fact, we have the opposite, I believe, because that's what they were saying about the spaces next to Pizzetta, was that anybody. Gets there first gets to park there. I think mostly it's just a, a matter of adding to the stock of parking that's available for. People shopping in Mystic. The way we do playgrounds, it's not for a particular neighborhood, it's for anybody who wants to go there. Even though.
But it's tied to this building, right?
But it's, yeah, it's, it's not. It, it, the idea is. It's not particularly tied to the building. They've got to provide it, but that just added to the stock of parking that we have in Mystic. That was the idea.
Yeah, I agree, and there's nothing worse than seeing a, you know, reserved for Groton Town Cop or something like that and having that spot blank ninety percent of the time. Um, that's.
But we gave them something. We gave them height based on that they would commit to us a number of spots.
Yeah, like Hal said, we've increased the pool of spots available.
For one year.
No, continuously.
Well, here, we just said it, it wasn't continuous.
Centered town.
Yeah.
What does that mean, automatic renewal? I mean, how enforceable is that on a, it's like a lease? There's no cancellation provision?
Violation of special permit.
No, we say you can't cancel it. I mean.
And then what happens? You cut the building down?
No, you get. Tops takes the top floor off.
Right. We've had violations of special permits before.
Right. But what's, how do we resolve it? Right, so say they don't do it after.
I mean, that's, that's a whole separate discussion, but the mechanism is in place. For violations of a special permit provision.
Yeah.
This would be, uh, one of those provisions.
I don't think you can have off-site parking as part of this. I don't think that, that works.
I'd take that out.
I would, and maybe that is, that's the solution, right?
Just take it off.
Take it off.
Yeah.
Put a period after, met entirely on-site period.
Yeah, yeah. That's the solution.
All right, let's do that. I mean, uh. After these regs, this, this group of regs go, um. We're gonna, um, work on a few items. One is the landscaping requirements. Um, the other is parking. And signage. Um, so those three things are, are need a little more in-depth. Uh, review, so we didn't include those items except for some minor changes in this, this group of. Reg changes. Um, so we're gonna relook at some of those landscaping signage and parking issues.
Before we drop, drop the, the off-site, if the off-site is owned, does anyone have a problem with it if? Whoever buys ten spaces someplace on the Stonington side?
Well, then they can't sell them.
I wouldn't mind a look, yeah, it would have to be tied to the deed, I would say.
Yeah, that's just, I think it's impossible.
So under the same ownership, maybe?
Yeah, you already have them, or a lease and just get the, the lease provision out of there.
Yeah.
That's the only part, part we're kind of. Oh, everybody's scared on.
No, I, I think that's fine, because then that gives them parking. It's all part of the whole building.
But this is what happened with Central Hall. If you were, if anybody was around for that. They wanted two spaces for each unit and they were looking for all kinds of spaces so that each one of those condo units would have two. Spaces downtown that were assigned to them. So they had a building on the north side of. Of, um, west, west Main Street. We call it the Tiff Building. And there's five uni- residential units there, and then there was four, um, retail units in the building. So they decided that they were going to put all of the. They were going to use twelve of those spots that were behind the building for the Central Hall, um. Residents. And. They got the planning commission to agree to that. Saying that the retail spots down there. The retail stores there now would do the validation program. And each of those you, residential units at the Tiff Building would be allowed. One space behind the building. So they decreased the amount of allowance for the commercial uses. In the Tiff Building and said they would all be validated under the validation program and they gave all their. Three-quarters of their spots behind the building to the Central Hall, um, condominiums. It was under the same ownership. So that's something that could happen in this case.
The reality is, I don't know of any shoppers ever parked behind those buildings. It's almost impossible to get in.
I did.
Well, those of us in the know could possibly. But it's a kind of, you know.
But even if it wasn't shoppers, it was employees that were using those buildings, the, those parking spaces. The employees that were working in those retail shops, so. Um.
Yeah.
That goes back to your pool, pool there, Hal, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyways, um. Let me figure out some stuff based on. What we talked about. And we'll come up with some language. Everybody okay?
Time to move on.
Yep. Okay, the next one was just to make a clarification, um. They, you agreed to allow the thousand square feet if a hundred, if parking requirements were meant on the premises. I just. Made it clear that a hundred percent of the parking requirements in the table were meant on the premises. Um. And it did not include the fifty percent reduction for the MDD.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. And is that only for residential and not for commercial in a mixed-use building? That's what I needed clarified also.
Okay, for being just residential.
Yeah, you want.
You're okay with it just residential?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you're, uh, you're calling it a two.
Okay. Nothing changed. Oh, that was just, uh.
Diane, do you want to just point out the percentage of public space on those two? The MVC and the MTC?
Did I just go through MTC?
Yeah, that, okay, there you go, there's MTC.
Okay, this is the MTC, the Mixed Juice Town Center, which is downtown. So the public space is a minimum, uh, two acres and fifteen percent of the total lot area.
Yeah, so as I said, the applications we're seeing right now are really modifications of existing buildings, um, rather than teardowns. And most of the lot is already covered by building or, or parking, and it's very difficult to find a usable fifteen percent of the total lot area that we can dedicate to public space. So. As, as we had said, we're gonna define what public space is and then reduce the amount, the percentage.
Does it make sense to just say for new construction?
Um, we probably need to define what new construction is. I mean, is that a small addition? Is it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And no, or you have people, I've seen, you know, you take everything down but one wall.
Yeah, exact, oh, yeah, right.
Uh, in fact, you have to be very specific, that's because I have a. We have one, a building on subway, so I, I still don't know how to define it. We stripped everything off the building but left the steel and the slab up. It's enormous warehouse. So now it's a brand-new warehouse. Everything's different about it. But the steel is the same steel and the slab's the same slab. Is that a new building? Kinda, but it's just really repaired.
I mean, we're finding with these sites that because they're already developed and they're just changing the use or maybe making some modifications to the building, there's really. Nowhere for them to put meaningful public space, um.
There is, but it's.
Small, right.
That's right. Extra, extra wide sidewalks, um.
Right.
No plaza between the sidewalk and the building, um. But it doesn't equal fifteen percent of the lot.
Right.
And it doesn't, we accomplish what we wanted to accomplish. I mean, I'm thinking on the, this, what's that, the? The south side or southwest side of Route One. Putting public spaces along the sidewalk there. Do we really care for that side? We certainly care on. The other side of the street where we've got a shopping center. But there's individual buildings having. More than a bench every now and then. I don't know anything really want. It's no place that anybody would be.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can, I think we can push the design that makes sense on these. It's just really meeting that percentage has been very difficult.
But wasn't that intended to be if it was a complete redevelopment?
That's what we were thinking. We were thinking about Benny's Plaza. But there's a lot of lots downtown that aren't, aren't the Benny's Plaza, but yet still fall under this regulation.
This has to be fixed, I guess, to recognize the difference.
So I think we'll propose a, a smaller amount, and then Diane came up with some public space design principles and we can incorporate. Into the design guidelines perhaps.
Good.
Just so people know what we're talking about. It's not open space wherever you can fit it in on the lot.
Right. Would we do what we do for residential, which happened to us on Star Street, instead also give a percentage that kind of goes what Sue, what Sue said? Can we somehow take money so we connect some of these downtown spaces to benefit us all?
So the open space for the subdivision, there's a specific, um, state law that allows us to do that. There's not enabling legislation, and even if there were, I think we would have to have a plan to tie it to.
I know.
And, um. If we ever do a Tiff downtown, that would be one way to get these public spaces connected and come up with a plan.
That's true.
Which is what we're proposing if, if we ever do a downtown Tiff.
Sure.
Great idea, though.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so you'll see some, you'll see some changes with this package for this stuff. Thanks, Diane.
Yeah, and that was the MVC was two acres or ten percent.
Right.
Oh, that's on two acres.
Two acres or more.
Two acres or more.
Right, but there's one down there we're working with now that's eleven acres, but most, probably half of it is wet. So they don't have a lot of area to, to provide public space.
Right.
This table was just changing the, the titles to match what we had.
Before we get to that table. The last two pages on seven.
Of seven.
Three twenty-seven and three thirty. If you read your write-up in the beginning, you said you were supposed to include for the industrial. Include the IM district and for the green area, the GC. District. To Sean, give him a hamburger helper pitches.
Oh, I was, I, I just included a sa- maybe my, my writing was wrong, but I, I included a sample of it. Um, the I, this is the IG district and it's a sample for the IG and the IM district. It's basically the same.
No, well, you either ought to change the title or. Your write-up wasn't correct in the.
No, this is the IG. There is an IM district, so.
If you went back to what you said you were gonna do. It said they were. They were changed, or they were the. Changes to those sections.
I, on page three, I said industrial district IG. It's a sample for the IG and IM district.
You didn't do IM and you didn't do GC.
I didn't include it, just like I didn't include all the residential, but it's the same exact changes.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
No, but you're gonna put those in?
Right, 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 right. Yeah. This one was, we changed the marine water, marine craft. We permitted it, like you said, in the WDD, WW district. The working waterfront district, instead of it being conditional. That was what you, um, read to last time. This goes back to the M, MDD district. The thirty-five percent and then, um. What we, what we've, what will decide with the other. Other language. At the top of the page, we, um. I changed this to a little before it just said. For a common lot line agreement. Um, and. You talked about a variance. You didn't want it, a variance or any kind of variable to the setback. Being used for that additional height. So that's what, that's the, um. Language I put in there.
In note one, can you change at the bottom line there, the shall to cannot be?
Shall not be?
No, cannot be.
Cannot be used instead of shall not be used.
Or may not be used.
Okay.
Shall implies that you could do it. You gotta say must, uh, cannot, or may not be used.
Pages, uh.
It's four seventeen.
Eight, no.
Oh, you mean on the.
May not be used.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then. And then these are just the same as what we've already talked about. Um. In section, dealing with the height limitations and the exceptions, we talked about different types of penthouses, so I added mechanical penthouse. So it was clear that it wasn't a penthouse for living. Um. And then I also added, I could add a definition for a mechanical penthouse if you wanted. Good. And then these were just. Some clarifications, um. This is for the flood. Flood exception, making sure it's for an existing building. And then this, I just added that this, these are exceptions for the ten percent. Exception area. This one, I think you wanted a clarification. I'm, I didn't yellow this out, minimum lot width.
Yeah, but you gotta show where that dimension is taken.
It's along this, um, this dotted line.
No, it isn't, because they're two lots, aren't they? See, the minimum lot width goes from the, the vertical line in the middle to the one on the side.
Right here?
No, no, on the one, look at the diagram on the left. Says minimum what, minimum width measurement, and you have a dash line that goes across two lots.
Maybe we just need arrows on each.
Or just one lot, just two, one lot.
Yep. Okay.
Because it's not clear.
Now I got it.
Hmm.
All right, I got it. Okay.
Because they'll take advantage or get confused.
This one, yeah, I think you wanted to add the minimum width of the travel portion here. This one, yeah, I think you wanted to add the minimum width of the travel portion here.
Mister Chairman, just, could you just go back to that picture for one second?
Yeah. This one?
Yeah. So we're talking. Minimum width or?
That's a, because that's a requirement somewhere.
The four hundred percent max starts, is measured to where the lot meets the minimum with requirement. Of the zoning regulations. So if your lot is triangular, you have to go back until it meets that minimum lot width. It's, it's in the definition. And I think there's a clarification.
Wrong, cause every time I think of width, I think of, you know, from left to right. You know, considering it's parallel with the street. So it's, it's not a minimum depth.
No.
No. It's where you measure the four hundred percent, the four hundred foot maximum distance. That you can have for a panhandle.
Okay. Just to, uh, get I them from having a mile long driveway, correct?
Right, that's right.
Alright. Okay, so you wanted to add the minimum travel width portion and I also added for two or three lots, it's fifteen feet. And for four, five lots, it's eighteen feet wide.
Is this really accurate? If you indicated which one of these lanes went to what lots, I think you have one too many lanes. Cause you can have one, one of those twenty foot wide access roads can feed up to three lots. So the one on your, say on the left, you could have one, two and three covered for it, right? And then you need another access lane for lots five and four. Which is two, not three.
You can have, this is showing how many lots you can serve off of a common access drive and the maximum is five lots.
No, I know that, but it's the width, the total width of that. Between the five lots, I think you have one too many lanes.
No, you could, you need twenty feet width for each lot that doesn't have um frontage on a street. So.
Where does it say that? It's in six, it says a maximum of three private access. Accessways are allowed to adjoin one another if a private common access driveway is used to serve the two lots. And meets the requirements of section four two two K. Isn't that where you get the minimum, you know, you're talking two to three lots and four to five lots?
Well, it's, this is the private. Private drive is serving five lots here, but these, each of these lots is, has legal. This one is legal access to this, the twenty feet wide. Um, are you, am I seeing, do I have a um? Pointer?
Yeah, we see your, we see your pointer.
Oh, you see my pointer? Okay, this one is access the twenty feet wide to here. This one is access to number two and this one is access to number four. This number five has legal access on the street, even though he's using a driveway off that common access.
Common access, yeah.
And this one has. A legal access on the street, even though he's using this as a drive, the driveway off of this common access drive. So it works.
No, I, I think it, it hover works. Well, what is, what is note six mean on the page before that?
A minimum of three private access drives are allowed to adjoin one another if a promi- private common access driveway is used. To serve the two or three lots and meets the requirements of section four point two dash two K. If two or three private es- access drives. Are joined, the required width of each private access may be reduced to twenty feet. So you could have, you could just have these three lots and this, you could show a driveway here for lot five. And a driveway out to the street for lot one. But I wanted to show that you could actually serve these two lots with this common access drive. But the maximum to serve is the five lots, not the six lots.
Right, and you can't have any more than three of those access points adjoining each other.
Right.
Couldn't put lot sixes next to it.
Right. Subdivisions have tried to do all kinds of things to finagle this. And so we really needed to make sure that they weren't putting, you know. Eight lots off of this common access drive instead of building a road. Once you get over five lots serving a access drive. Pretty much, we probably want you to build some type of road system.
So that. Go ahead, Mike. Oh, sorry, uh, could one and five be owned by someone else?
Yeah.
And then would you still be able to have five? Like, could you have two, four, three or two, four and then beyond that more?
So if one and five were, had access off of. Off of the street.
Yeah.
With their driveways? No, because you could only have three, three of these next to each other. One, two, three, you couldn't have, each one has to have actual. A panhandle. You can't have easements anymore.
Okay, all right.
Before you used to be able to have this as an easement area and you can't do that anymore because it got too confusing. People would do eas- people would do easements all over the place.
Diane, what if one and five had their own driveways? Could you then use this common driveway to go to house six? Even though he's got his own access out there, so. Just to expand on, on Michael's question, could you?
Yeah, if he kept this. If he kept this.
Yes.
He wanted to come in over here and these guys weren't, didn't have access off of this common drive. Yeah, he could do that. He'd have to have some kind of, you know, easement.
Like everybody else, yeah.
As long as he kept this panhandle. That was his, right, right.
Okay. I guess it's just always so hard trying to. Then take this and apply it to, you know.
Right.
Whole uh town.
And this has worked. We've already used this type of diagram for a number of people that have come in and, and. Saying what does this really mean? These regulations and once we show them this diagram, it's a lot clearer.
And this will be professionally drawn up.
Yes, yes.
Um, so one, one final question, the green stripe that you have, the twenty width, that is the only part that will be paved, correct? Or a, a finished driveway. The other ones are considered easements? Or frontage?
Yeah, this could be. Um, it depends on how they, they write up their common access agreement. Between all the property owners, um. Everybody could.
Sixty foot wide driveway.
Everybody could have, you know, this easement could be over the whole thing or it could just be over this twenty feet in the middle. But the pavement would only be either fifteen feet or the eighteen feet.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be pavement. It could be crushed stone or whatever, because the town doesn't, the town doesn't maintain it. It's up to these property owners to maintain it. A lot of touch.
So each property has to have, it looks like twenty foot or more of frontage.
Right.
Would touch the main street.
Right.
And then, like you said, three maximum coming off of a shared driveway. This shows, and I understand what Jeff is saying, this shows five coming off, but you're saying that's not the way it has to be.
Right.
This is just, you know, and I don't know if that's more confusing than it is.
Or maybe, you know, maybe I put dots here, like a driveway here dotted. You could do either here, maybe. I don't know.
I think that might clear it up if you have one and five going to the street. And then a dotted going to there that's saying that could be done that way, but you know, the probably the more preferred. Is to them go straight onto the street.
Yeah. It depends on what's on the street. Sometimes there is. Wetlands there or something. I don't know.
You know, you get a situation, yeah, where there's so many driveways so close together and you can't control that then.
Right.
I almost prefer it this way.
Yeah, I agree. Right, and then, you know, then the.
But this. I still think the thing is, I'm not sure that it really meets. Meets all the requirements, doesn't it? You still need a twenty, you have to have a twenty-five foot wide private accessway. For each lot to the street with an unobstructed private access.
Unless you're adjacent to each other and then you can go down to twenty feet.
Yeah, but it has to, it can't cross another driveway. On note five, I think you gotta, you ought to really read these. I mean, there's maybe nothing wrong with what you want to do, but I'm not sure that it really meets the requirements that are written down. In text. Cause it says it has, you have to have a private accessway. Has to be unobstructed private accessway, which would mean there's nothing in the way. You couldn't put a driveway in. To another lot across there.
Unobstructed, I mean, you can't put a driveway or is it unobstructed? I mean, you can't put a fence or a.
Anything. I thought it was, so yeah, it'd be open. On it, it says unobstructed private accessway. I would think it, you can't have anything in there.
I don't think a driveway would obstruct me.
A driveway is an obstruction. I think a stone wall is obstruction. A shrub is obstruction, but not just the driveway.
Yeah, I think we, we used that word because um in a couple of subdivisions a while ago, someone would show their access. But it, it went through a huge piece of ledge. Or it went through a wetland and, and we considered both the obstructions. You couldn't, you couldn't construct a driveway there.
Yeah, but it's not just driveways, wouldn't it be for. Getting other utilities or any other reason, or is it just, is it just for a driveway?
This is, this could be utilities and access drive, um, and that's where the east, the comment, the easement comes in.
Utilities can be in east.
In number two, a private common access drive easement and maintenance agreement document must be submitted. And recorded in land records clearly indicates the maintenance responsibilities. The owner's benefiting the lots. This works, it's worked with subdivisions. It just had to be shown um. In the regs how it works, so. So basically this works, what we've been doing. It's just we've had to force people to do this. So.
Well, just thought I'd make sure that it doesn't conflict with what the written words are.
Well, we'll check it again to make sure, okay?
Or change the words, I don't care, but.
Um, this next one was the sightlines. This was something we just said is prohibited instead or must not be maintained. That made it clear.
On this, on page five, six.
I have six.
Yeah, item sixteen on screening. That outdoor storage areas in the WW. Area included shall be screened to visible from the street. I mean, a place like uh the Mystic Shipyard, I don't think has screen walls that you can't see into the. Into the yard and they have both stored all.
So you wanna take the WW out of that?
I think so.
Okay.
Is that really a requirement? I can see putting it in the IM and IG world, but. I don't want to make it so that existing businesses like that are affected.
Well, the, the only thing is, if, if it is adjacent to residential or um. You only have to go up eight feet high or six or eight foot high fence or a wall. Um, you don't have to screen twenty feet up, so.
I know that, but if you go down by the south end of the shipyard where the brokers have their. Fifty foot yachts for sale, I don't think they're screened from the street.
Um.
I don't think they are at all. They are not.
And I don't have a problem with it and I, I mean, people that live down there probably don't have a problem with it either.
So, but what about from a residential district?
Well, then, I don't have a problem for IM and IG. I was just thinking the WW district, which is really well a point.
Okay. Do you want to remove the WW?
WW, yes.
I would agree.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, because I, I mean, that's sort of a unique residential area.
Okay, so let's see. That's just the health changing.
We got on page five twenty-three on that. Laboratory.
Yep.
Business. Should there be restrictions on if, if you're doing something outside? That might be noisy to say you can't do it or you need a special permit?
Um, I'm trying to think of.
Cause you can have some noise produce, you could say it's a laboratory that's, and it's a noise producing thing outside. Wanted to test. Race car or something. No, I mean, they have, that's all.
Yeah.
Or if you wanted to, yeah. Do something that's noisy. It could be a technical laboratory. The original definition would imply that it would be inside a building. Now it could be include outside space too. When you get into the technical areas.
Okay, I'll see, um. I'll see if it already, if there's already other requirements that it needs to meet, otherwise we can add something. For outside work.
Don't want to get caught, caught with somebody thinking they're meeting the, the technical laboratory criteria. Though really wasn't what was intended.
Okay, let me think about that. Okay. Uh, this was, um, you wanted that add or associated with a water dependent use there. So we added that.
This is, yeah, but there's, again. You've got restrictions that apply to the WW district that I don't think are realistic. Repairs and maintenance. Must be conducted inside a building. A lot of repairs are done on a boat in the water. And you're not, and I don't see that as a problem. In those cases that I would think that being inside the building should only apply to the IM and IG districts.
Where are you?
Five, one, thirteen B. It's on. I guess it doesn't have a bottom page. It's one of the twenty-one marine watercraft. Top of the page. Right, we're, uh, go down one line. Says repairs, no, or you're. The cursor right there, repairs and maintenance. Any repair or routine maintenance must be conducted inside a building. Or under a structure. There's a lot of boat repairs that are done in the water.
Yes, and or routine on land, changing oil, right?
Yeah, and on land.
Right.
And some of the boats coming into the Mystic Shipyard are too big to be hauled out, to be put in the building. And they may need a motor to be, or engine to be worked on, or the radar could be broken. So I would, I would think that the. In that case, item four only applies to. Work and being done in the IM and IG. Area. Not, it shouldn't be applicable to a marina or to a shipyard.
The, um. The mariners are also subject to coastal site plans. And one of the issues with a, in coastal site plans is to make sure that whatever work you're doing. There's no hazardous materials getting into the water.
Right.
So, um.
Work that's being, that's done on repairs and maintenance that doesn't affect hazardous materials.
Okay, so only thing items that don't affect hazardous materials can be done outside. Is that what you're saying?
No, just, just say that any repair routine maintenance. Must be conducted inside a building or under a structure applies only to, to the IM and IG districts.
Why, why not the WW if it's concerning repairs that are associated with the hazardous materials?
I would think.
It could, but you could have hazardous material that inside the boat. I mean, if you've got a hundred foot yacht coming in and they want work done on their engine. You should be able to do it without hauling the boat.
Well, that's in the water. We're not, we're not talking about on, in the water. We're talking about on land. Cause we don't have control over what they're doing on the water.
But what if the boat is, it could be hauled too. But where does it say that? That it doesn't apply to boats in the water.
We don't, we don't control the boat. We don't control the site planning for water, for things that are on the water.
Right, but say I have a, I have, I have several boats. There is no repair or maintenance. On my boats ever inside a building at any of these places. It never happens. They don't bring me inside a building. And nor should they. Cause then they have to have huge space for all these and mine are small. If you put big ones in there, there's no way they're, they're going inside a building.
Not even have the space might not be available.
Right, that's my, guess my point. That was my second point. So Diane, I have to agree with Jeff. I don't think this is appropriate, but your point is, I believe it's, it is. Not appropriate except for hazardous materials, right?
Right, right. That's what we're concerned about.
But the hazardous materials are caught, called up in three. It says they must be consistent with section six, four, eight. The WRPD or section eight, six townway. That's fine. It's but thirty pairs and maintenance. It shouldn't. On the other places, the maintenance was in repairs were gonna be in fiberglass hall or something. But there's a lot of work that's done. In the yard that doesn't fall into that category.
Well, okay, what's the difference between repairs and maintenance of boats in the WRPD? Versus right on the coast. Associated with the marina. You still don't want major repairs happening that are.
Of repair it is or major.
Okay.
It says any, it doesn't say ma- major or hazardous material or anything. It says any.
Tweak that a little bit.
Maybe I tweaked that a little bit.
I mean, I, I, I do see your point Diane. It seems like, you know, you don't want. In some things, if we can get them inside, it would probably be better.
But.
That's why I had should before and you guys made me change it to must last time.
You're blaming it on us.
So he's a full circle Diane. We just have to ease.
Go back to should again.
Never you should.
But it shouldn't say should either.
Well, no, no, that's should, should, should is not the right word.
Yeah.
I think it's just say.
Okay, I'll think about it.
Yeah.
So you want, you want. But I, it's, the postal zone we're worried about too. It's not just because it's a boat and it's on. You know, it's a boat that you should be able to do anything you want, uh, just because it's a boat and you're in a marina.
No, but you, you shouldn't be saying they have to be done inside.
Okay, well, that's what you guys made me do last time, so I'm.
The word should, the word should just doesn't direct anybody to necessarily do anything. So that was correct, but the idea is here, we now we've got the. All repairs in the WW and that's not what is necessary. It's just.
Shouldn't be applicable, there should be. It shouldn't be any.
No, it's the any that's the wrong.
That's right, yes.
Major repairs. I'll fi- figure it out.
Has to do with the hazardous material.
Right.
Right, so have to equate the hazardous material as a problem in the WW. That's the problem.
Yeah, but that's in, covered in item three.
It is.
I'll have to see if it's covered in item three. I'll see what it says. It might just be storage of hazardous materials in that. I don't know. I'll have to look.
All right, but then it, then if you want to change for to.
Yeah, I'll change.
Materials.
All right.
Have to be cons.
Okay, I'll change it.
We gotta make sure it's not overly restricted.
I know. I'll get, I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out.
Well, but it's maintenance involving hazardous materials or something like that.
Right.
Yeah, but you don't want to put the marinas out of business.
Because I, I truthfully, I don't think that if someone is making repairs to upholstery, for instance, on the boat.
Right.
You're not gonna be bringing it inside the building, nor is there a need to.
It's expensive to bring a boat and moving it around, I mean, and putting it into a building.
Before it's polluted with hazardous materials.
Well, if it's all contained in the boat. But you've got refrigeration units on a boat and that's hazardous material.
Okay.
Hopefully people do the right thing. Hopefully people do the right thing.
Well, yeah. DEEP will go after him.
Yeah.
It was supposed to.
Um, this was in the WRPD. You didn't want brake fluid. We changed it to hydraulic fluid. So. This was just changing it to watercraft. And now we get to the EB and I can stop and Bruce will take over. Bruce, are you still there?
Still there, oh.
He's charged up.
Okay, so the, the EV regulations, so we reviewed this back in, um, February, I believe, um. So we just got to. Each year, so changes from last time, um. Are, I eliminated a statement that the regulation only applies to uses requiring. Twenty-five or more spaces and now applies to all applicable uses regardless of the number of parking spaces, so. Last time, um. Yeah, we, we just wanted to apply it to, um, to more uses, so this would apply to. Um, mixed use dwell, mixed use projects, multi-unit residential, commercial office, hotel motel. Um, industrial developments and I tied it to the next section here would be applicable to development, so. We're, I'm, I was trying to find a balance between when would this apply and when would it not? We, we were kind of thinking, you know, if it was a really small addition, you know, do we want this requirement to trigger? When do we want it to apply and when do we not? So what I tried to do here is I tried to define. And so what I suggested was that this would apply for vacant sites with new development proposals. Um, so if it's vacant sites posing one of any of the applicable uses under one there, this regulation would apply. Um, the second category is existing developments, increasing the floor area, impervious surface. Or number of parking spaces by more than fifty percent from the existing conditions. So I, I, I would say that's kind of a substantial addition, substantial change to the existing development, so that would catch. Bigger projects, but it wouldn't catch something like a, a cooler addition. Outside one of our big shopping classes that would trigger this for the whole site. So I tried to kind of balance.
Would that be cumulative or is it, uh, just one of those things? From reading it?
So if you were talking about like a retail strip type of thing, is it cumulative or?
No, well, uh, fifty percent.
I think it's or.
So if thirteen percent of the floor area and fifteen percent of the parking and fifteen percent of the impervious surface area. Does that add up? That adds up to forty-five percent, so they would not require it?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. What, what I meant was or, so is it, it's fifty percent, um. Addition or fifty percent impervious surface, um, coverage addition or fifty percent parking? So I tried to make it.
Okay.
A, a, any one of those, if it meets the threshold of any one of those, it would apply.
All right.
But that's a good point. Um, and then the third category is, um, any site disturbance of more than fifty percent of the area. So what I was thinking on that, if they're starting to tear up. Um, the asphalt or if, you know, they're, they're major site clearings or anything, then, um. It would apply to this as well. Then Diane, if you could just scroll down a little bit there. Okay, so required number of spaces, so. Last time it was a little confusing. What, what I did last time is I, I kind of drafted this pretty much exactly off Middletown Connecticut's regulation. And what we had, we always had at least one fully equipped and operational charging station would, would apply. Or would be required. Or what I have before is or three percent of the total number of required spaces, um. Comments last time where we wanted were that we would like to increase that a little bit, so. What I did was one, I kept the one or ten percent of the total required parking spaces, whichever is greater. Um, I also had a maximum in here last time and I, I reduced that, so there's, there's no, um, maximum requirement. That was something else that we discussed. Uh, okay, make ready standards. This is something we also discussed, so make ready. This is what I was talking about when I said, um. A lot of communities that have adopted regulations like this have a standard in place that. Um, new parking areas or new parking spaces are pre-wired. So, so pre-wired to accommodate the future expansions of, expansion of more electronic vehicle charging stations. So it, 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 it doesn't, um, increase the required number of fully equipped parking spaces. But it does allow for easy installation of additional, um, units in the future. I think what I read was, you know, the, the, the cost of. Fully equippeding it later on is, is, is much greater and I think. Um, you save about eighty percent of the cost if you pre-wire first, so, so that's why this is in here. And I think we discussed that this was a good idea. Um, last time, so what I, what I did was I did, um, twenty-five percent of the parking spaces would be required to. Pre-wired if it meets the threshold of an applicable use and an applicable development. Um, the next change is charging level. I think we discussed, you know, maybe the terms of level one, level two, level three may change over time. So the comment was to. Change it to the voltage that represents the levels. So level one is one-ten voltage, level two is two-hundred-and-twenty. Uh, so what I did is I just made that represent the volts instead of the, the levels.
You got a typo before the two-twenty. In, in two-six.
In voltage there or?
Should, you left out the word on.
No, both, okay. All right, and then request for parking reduction. So we also talked about having some kind of an incentive for. Applicants to provide more fully equipped electronic vehicle parking spaces than the regulation requires. So what I did here is I, I left the incentive up to. Um, for you guys to decide, you know, whether or not you would like to allow an incentive. For developer if they were proposing more than the required EV parking spaces. So what I did was I said that, um, each EV parking space in it, in, in excess of the required amount by the section. Could count for up to two parking spaces. And that would be, you know, a, a, an request made when an applicant files an application. And it could be determined, um, by the planning and zoning commission at the time of approval. So you could say, you know, maybe it's one-point-five or maybe it's two, it's, it kind of allows some. Ability to kind of tailor that to a specific project and see what's reasonable.
But then it says the part number of parking spaces we have is unrealistic. I mean, this would go below the required.
Yeah.
Taking parking spaces away.
I don't understand that at all. I don't understand that at all.
No, I don't either. I don't think the minimum number should be decreased.
I know, yeah.
I think market conditions are gonna determine how many, you know, EV vehicles that we need. And it's still a vehicle, still a location, so I, I'm all for, you know, giving incentive, but. I say, don't, don't do that, nine. I don't think we should do that at all.
Right. I agree.
And then when a developer needs more EV, EV, people are gonna request it or he's not gonna get people in, at his spots. The, 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 the business market will drive that.
Okay, I can definitely.
When I was, uh, because I believe I was the one who suggested that. And I was thinking more in the MDD area or, you know, places where we. Be a way to get people to do it. I'm, I'm a carrot rather than a stick guy, you know?
No, we, we have enough trouble with parking spaces.
Well, maybe this could apply where, where we're talking about a much larger lot. You're right, if we're in Mystic and we're scratching for ten spaces here and twenty spaces there, it's, it's impossible.
No, or you look at. Which I know, uh, historically has always had a problem. Though I, I would always argue that Big Y parking lot, I've never gone in there and not found the spot, but it doesn't have the required parking. Uh, and I think that, that something like this might be something that would allow Big Y to, to then. Requirements, something like this, so it might be a way to. I mean, the thing is, is that. It's gonna be an expense to do this and so that person isn't. Would think you'd always want to. Just a plain old parking space than it would be to. Put in the electric space. Would be when you had a problem and you were trying to meet your parking requirement, how you. Could do it. But I can see where it would be a problem if it was a very small lot.
So maybe it's for large, much larger projects or something. Or maybe we don't include it now and keep it in the for the future maybe or something.
Yeah, we 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 could eliminate it. It it does say may, so it doesn't say that we have to, it doesn't say we. Shall or how I mean, it's it kind of left it up to the discretion of the planning zoning commission by. By each application's merit, own merit, so.
It's saying our pop parking calculations are not good, is what it's saying, so you ought to revise those. I I don't think we want to give up the min- minimum amount of parking.
Actually, I actually, to that point, for our large parking requirements, Big Y is a great example or Stop and Shop. I don't think they are good. I don't think we get ever come close to filling all the spaces we currently require. And so for.
The numbers, I remember when we did that one, when uh. The last time that when they did all that. Thing and they had to do it, they did not need it, but or they were very, very close. It would seem like, you know, uh, I don't know, I I would like to think that it would work in big lots, but.
We've changed the way we calculate parking in those large shopping centers um. So I haven't recalculated what they need in those shopping centers since then, so it might. They might be okay right now, I don't know, but they are, there are a lot of spaces in Big Y that aren't used, that whole area in the rear. In the rear by um CVS and Chester's barbecue area. That's never really gets used, and then there's actually um. There's a whole other area right along the railroad tracks, that's all grass back there, that is reserved parking in case they need it in the future. It's not, it's not um it's landscape right now, but. It could be used for parking if they needed it in the future.
There are that. That shopping center is very well used, is pretty well populated, and I can't think of how many hundreds of extra spaces there are. At peak season for Thanksgiving or the holidays, or there's there's never anything close to filling those spaces.
Although the movie theaters closed, so that building's closed and then.
Filled up its own little lot there, that was about it.
This is, it has to be a request to. Isn't that correct, the way I'm reading this?
Um, did you, yeah, it would have to be a request to the planning and zoning commission to allow for this.
Then we would just either say yes or no.
Yeah, I think that that might get into a little. Legalities.
I like regulations that tell you what you can do and what you can't do, and this is wishy-washy. I I recommend take the whole thing out.
Right, yeah, there may be Mackenzie issues with it as well, maybe we can, let's look, maybe we can think of some options or some, I don't know.
I just don't understand what, to what end, why are we, why would you, we want to reduce parking? Just because you put, I mean theoretically, somebody could put in all EV spots and lower their parking by a quarter now.
Well. They could, Steve, but the thing is, is that you're. Be far more expensive, I would say.
Yeah, again, I don't know what it's trying to accomplish.
Well, you're, I would, I guess it was trying to get more EV parking spaces, but uh.
I I have a question about the size of a parking space. Do you need a larger parking space for EV?
They're all nine by date by eighteen, they're all the same size.
Yeah, same standard.
Well, you've got where the where the charging station is, that takes up a certain area.
Well, the charging station isn't part of the space.
Choosing on the island.
It could be on an island, but it could also be to the front of it, like they have at the library.
Where to to your point about it being awfully expensive to put one of these things in. If in fact you're doing a development that looks like there just isn't enough room and they might have to go to structured parking. It would be way cheaper to put in a hundred percent EV spaces and reduce your parking by twenty-five percent like. I can see that could be a problem if somebody actually wants to take advantage of that, rather than be pushed to. There was it like thirty thousand dollars of space now for. Uh or and a parking structure.
Yeah, but. Number five on this list. Each EV spot shall be posted with signage indicating spaces only for electric vehicles.
Yeah, that's a problem.
That's not.
I don't like that.
Barbara has a good, Barbara has a good point too um for parking lots that don't have a lot of islands between the spaces. There'd be.
The big, the big Y doesn't have a lot of islands.
Right, so.
Actually, Big Y actually has a lot of places where they got that central sidewalk and whatnot.
But they're a big island where they're where they're uh. Like what what I would say, the uh there's an island that separates the big. Hot from the 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 rest of the shopping area there, I think there's a a big anchor on it.
Yeah, I think that has a lot of handicap spaces there too, because it has a sidewalk going down there, straight. But that's a, that's an issue, does the um parking lots might have to be redesigned because you just wouldn't want all these poles sticking out in the middle of the. No, parking spaces and getting hit.
No, but they have, they have like those uh structures that they store the uh carriages in. And I could imagine where something like that could be incorporated. With something like this.
With respect to the signage issue, which is, you can see the arguments both ways. One is you want people to be able to park wherever, but the other is you don't want people in a. In a gas guzzling car to pre-parking where and somebody else needs to charge. But the location of these spaces, I would say, it seems like it should almost be the opposite of handicap spaces. You know they're going to be a problem if they're in fact the closest spaces or the most advantageous spaces. So maybe they need to be among the least advantageous spaces, because you're kind of using it almost like a gas station you're leaving your car at. So it doesn't need to want to be really close to what it is at this time.
That we were going to have something about active char.
Active.
Uh not just like a a. Oh, but uh of EV vehicle that is actively charged.
Oh, so even if you have an electric car, you have to be actively charging it?
And you're not like just, I I I don't know if if you want to provide it just as like uh, you know, like you would for uh, you know, they have. Parents with children or, you know.
So then again, I said, it's all, it's almost the opposite, parents with children, uh expective mothers.
Yeah, no, I know what you mean.
You know, that means that ends up being very close, these don't need to be very close for that reason.
And it's not mandated to have those spaces.
And it's not mandated to have those spaces. Actually, I'm thinking about a big um at the Best Buy in that lot. They've got a bunch of EV spaces. And they're kind of in a weird place, which is where they should be. There's where nobody else would be parking normally, because it's somewhere between the gas station and a parking space. So it's kind of handy to get to to Subway sandwich, I suppose, but it's not handy to big to. The target audience, which is Best Buy, but they're the ones who probably want.
And that also is a place that I would never park, Hal. So maybe it does, and you know what I mean? Does its own uh.
That that would do it.
Well, there's no regulation like there is for handicaps, I know, I don't know what it is. But I know you would say uh. I guess if they're pretty. Want them to be uh exclusive.
Well, if you look on page eight twelve, it it addresses the location.
And we we can definitely rework number eight there, accessibility, it says um. Spaces dedicated for EV parking shall be a standard parking size um and should be located in readily accessible areas, but not the most convenient location for access. This may encourage non-electric vehicle parking. Um and then it goes into EV parking spaces. And equipment shall be placed in areas that won't interfere with pedestrian or vehicle circulation. Um we we can certainly work that to, you know, it's kind of. Suggesting right now, it's not in the most convenient or the least convenient, but we can rework that to. Direct it a little further away from a convenient parking space, if that's kind of the direction of the commission.
Well, I think this is what people were saying, that's what they wanted, what's there.
Yeah, if that gets worked, then the signage. Um it's like, why would you park further away if you weren't charging your car?
Exactly.
So it's automatic, if you do that, then.
Yeah, self-moderate.
Kind of take cares of itself, takes uh care of itself.
So it's so if I'm if I'm hearing everyone right, or um oh eliminate the. The signage requirement that says, um, you know, these parking spaces are only for electronic vehicles, eliminate that requirement and keep eight the way it is. Is that what we're talking about?
Save a sign.
Maybe you have signs on half of half of them or something, I don't know.
Bruce was your.
Only for parking for EV vehicles that are actively charging. That kind of signage.
Sign sounds good, except that you end up with a point where eventually you end up with so many EV parking spaces. That non-EV cars start to get strapped for a place to park and we don't kind of want that to happen either.
But every time you park an EV car, doesn't mean you're going to hook it up to be charged.
Well, you wouldn't be parking in that spot if it's remote.
We may be worrying about something that's. Not meaning.
Or our town hall charger, is that, is that sign to say EV only?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and that's the ones, you know, is competing with the handicap spaces, it's so close to the building. Usually you end up doing that just because it's the easiest one to get powered to.
Yeah.
Right.
And then we're um would, we're agreed on nine deletion.
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I would like to uh, you know, I I imagine that this regulation is probably something that we're going to have to revisit. Uh in the next, you know, period, you know, whatever it is, year or something like that.
Yeah, hearing what the car companies are doing, it sounds like that's a definite.
But I I think that we're, this is cutting edge, and Bruce, I want to thank you, I think you did a great, great job.
Yes.
All right, well, yeah, I I I think we have some, you know, guidance on how to kind of adjust this and uh. Rework it a little bit, um we we would be one of the few municipalities in Connecticut to have something like this, so there's not too many examples anywhere else. Um of this, so yeah, we can, we can rework this a little bit and put it for you again.
Thank you, Bruce.
You're welcome.
We're going to have to make a press release for Bruce. Rotten is leading the charge here.
Why not?
Leading the charge.
Pun intended.
It wasn't intended.
Hey, the only one other thing we have is um. The grading stuff. So we talked about this um. Last time, I think you were all in agreement, it was a good idea. I did do a little clarification, I actually um made a definition for retaining wall um. And how to measure the height of a retaining wall, it's along the face of the retaining wall. Just to make sure everybody understands that, any developer understands that, and then we we looked at this um. We talked about when you're having retaining walls in between that. Five foot offset from the property line where the existing grade is. Only one plus or minus one foot you can have, and then you can have. Basically a three-to-one slope going up to the setback line. And if you want to install retaining walls within this area, the maximum height of the retaining walls can be four feet in height. And they have to be separated by a distance of ten feet. Um so I don't know if you, if this looks good to you, if there's any concerns with this um. But it's something, we need something for this area, because we're getting into some situations where some major development where um. Retaining walls are proposed right at pretty close to property line and they're very high. So.
I think we should try it. Can we go back to that definition of retaining wall?
Retaining wall, this one?
No, the one in in yellow.
Oh, the height or the retaining wall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't, why can't the wall be above the level of the soil that it's retaining? And not count.
Why can't the retaining wall be above?
You say you want to build a wall, you build a wall up to five feet, you're only retaining soil up to the four-foot level. You don't think that will happen?
Yeah, but we're looking at the visual aspects of the wall too. A five-foot wall is a five-foot wall, it doesn't matter how much you're retaining.
Yeah, but, well, yeah, but that's what the four-foot is for, isn't it, what's retained?
No.
That's the visual thing?
No. Right here, the four feet?
Yeah.
Right, so. So what do you want this to be, five feet here?
No, to allow it, if somebody wants to put, raise the wall up a little bit, I. For another reason, just to keep people from falling over.
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't keep anybody from falling over unless it's three foot six high, so we're not going to get there. Agree with the normal rip, normal retaining wall is above the height of the. Of the soil retaining, which would mean that inside that four-foot retaining wall, it'll only be three foot six.
Is that? Is that what we intend or?
Well, I think what we're looking at before is what it looks like to have these stacked four-foot walls.
I I don't have a problem with that, I just want to make.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at the height of the wall, how much it retains here. I don't, I don't have a problem with, it's the height here.
Yeah, but it, you could go up to four feet.
Here.
Yeah, with soil.
Yeah.
If the wall's built a little bit above that, or are you saying the soil has to be a little bit below that?
Uh uh it doesn't matter where the soil is, we're looking at the face of the wall here.
It's not, that's not the uh. The property joining, let me try Diane, the property adjoining is going to see a visual thing and it's only going to see the wall, it's not going to see the soil. So you're going to be looking at four feet of wall, but if you have multiple in stack, it's essentially seeing a ten-foot wall.
But I I thought it wasn't for a visual sense, it was for a structural.
No, it's visual.
It's just visual.
Well, it's visual, but what happens here is a, somebody comes and puts a ten-foot-high retaining wall here. And then fills all of this area and creates a pad up in this area here, and we don't want that, so. And then fills all of this area and creates a pad up in this area here, and we don't want that. So.
From a structural standpoint.
Well, from a visual and a creating more, more pad area.
Think about that apartment complex on Pleasant Valley Road North, correct?
Right, right.
Which is. Needs were, would have benefited from, I think, a visual. You know, this thing visually, it doesn't look good the way it is.
Yeah, but it could be a structural problem too.
The structural is, is part of the engineering work. So I don't, I don't think we should be worrying about the structure. We want to retain a wall. We build dams. We can do retaining walls as much as we want. So I don't think that's what this is the problem. This is mostly a visual. But I do have a problem with this is that why would, given this diagram? Why would anybody build a retaining wall? Because if one and three is what the soil will do normally, in fact, that's, that's modest. You go one and two. Then why am I, if I'm inscribing that line of one and three? With my four foot high walls, why would I bother? Why would I just not stack up the, the dirt?
Yeah, maybe, maybe he does want to do just this little wall here and then just. Then just flatten it out all here and create some living space in this area.
Well, I suppose if it's living space, it does make it better for, you know.
Yeah, right.
For the Aztecs to plant crops. I mean, that's the kind of what we're looking at here. But. There's, in this case, it doesn't do him any good to build that retaining wall.
The, the way I have it here, no, but there's other options he can have.
Barely, if it's, if it's, if the one and three is sacrosanct, then it'll always look about that way.
Right, if the setbacks 50 feet back and he puts his little retaining wall here and he flattens this out, so he's got more of a buildable yard area. I don't know. I think we have to start somewhere.
Okay.
But this was the best I could figure out.
Is there anything to stop him from putting up a retaining wall like your first retaining wall there? And then sloping up the dirt, one and three?
And then, why does it have to be level?
It doesn't have to be level.
Could be one and three. It's what I'm kind of saying. You can have a combination here.
Right.
So that the second one could actually be at. The, almost seven feet, right?
Well, that's, that's the problem. Do you want to have him have this retaining wall, then slope up one to three and then have another one up here? I, I think that might defeat purpose.
Well, if it's landscape, I don't know if it would be too bad.
But then you, then why would, well, I don't know.
Yeah, but almost be as if you would, Diane, you would stack. Four foot wall. That's where you would end up being.
But then you're creating, you're actually filling in, you keep filling in. If you created this wall up here, you're then you're filling in up to here.
Yeah, and then doing it again.
And then doing it again.
I mean, what this, what, what that would do is to soften it a little bit because you're, you're stepping back instead of just a sheer eight foot high wall.
Right, but.
I think almost going, looking at your diagrams, since you have a maximum, maximum four foot height and a minimum 10 foot. Just with that diagram, you're already at one to four. I mean, actually gotta come back. Yeah, it, it becomes that's deeper. You're going up four and over 10. Instead of up one and over three. Okay, now I'm really confused.
It's not, it's, I don't think it's to scale right there.
One to three. Four to 12. But it's four to 10, so it is.
Maybe I did try to use it to.
It is a little steeper. No, you actually did it right. It actually showed the way you have it there, even though you don't have to scale. It actually could be a little steeper with your retaining laws. Because with your retaining all, you're going four foot rise to 10 foot run. Instead of four foot rise to 12 foot run without it. That's what your one to three is.
I think what we're trying to do is to not have a sheer wall, right?
Right, and this, this accomplishes it, but I was, I was complaining that it, there was no point to put in a retaining wall, but here it does buy you a little bit of steeper slope. Without looking too badly. Though I, I think you could probably do even more because you're showing it dead flat in between retaining wall sections. And. In fact, it wouldn't be because it wouldn't drain. So with your minimum 10 feet, I'd say you can have a maximum one foot rise. And then you'll give them a little bit more of a gimme. What you want to do to have it drain anyway.
Or we could take away that one and three and just say you've got. You, you can have four foot high retaining walls within that setback area, but you have to have a minimum 10 feet apart. I don't know.
Yeah. I think that does it.
So if you take away the one third.
You take away one third. Now you might want to look at your diagram. You might want to tell them where that first retaining wall.
Where the first retaining wall can be, and then don't worry about the one and three.
Right. Minimum of 10 feet, maximum four foot. That's your steps.
Okay, let's do that. Does that sound good, everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think so. And then, because that's the minimum, it may end up being more than that, right? If you can get the.
Yeah.
Than that 10, and it would actually then make it look.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good. All right.
Diane, but then also because you'll, you'll need, they'll need to, they'll complain about it, is. The, the line that connects the two retaining walls. You can put in a maximum. You need to put a, a maximum slope into there if we want to do that.
Max slope.
Max slope. And it can be modest. It can be 10% or it's one in 10 or something like that, but it needs a slope. Visually, it'll, it'll be fine.
All right. And then I think that's it.
What about the max or the minimum? Height of the wall before you require a structural engineer?
Oh, I've got to check with, I'm gonna check with building on that. And maybe public works. To see what that height is.
That regulation at Stoneington came, came with, wasn't that to identify? Where you needed to have, it was from a structural concern, not a visual concern, wasn't it?
Um, it might have been both, but I'll check that regulation.
They might have, well, I just, they might have, it might have. But.
We have to be concerned with that? Do, do we need to be concerned with that?
Well, to me, that's a real concern would be from the strength standpoint.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering if that wouldn't be held.
No problem with retaining.
Code or something.
Collapse after.
Is it zoning though? Is it zoning?
Oh, you mean a building, it should be a building.
Code.
Code requirement. It may be in there, and we shouldn't have it in this.
Diane?
Um, a lot of times, a lot of times we're the ones that are asking for it because nobody else does, so I don't know.
Because it's not anywhere else, I mean.
Yeah.
Then I think it should be here.
Yeah.
Diane?
Yes.
You, some of, some of these retaining walls that are giant monsters.
Yes.
Would this regulation prevent that kind of a thing?
It would prevent it if it's between the property line and the setback line. That's all we're. Dealing with now. So.
I don't know if you were around Crystal Avenue, that. You know, there. There was a famous one at, at the Home Depot in Montville that collapsed.
Right.
I'm just wondering if this kind. That's what we're trying to avoid?
Um, right now, we're only dealing with the areas between. Like I said, the, the property line and the setback line.
Okay, all right.
Other towns have other standards for retaining walls on the site. And what you can look at in the future. But we wanted to start with this at least.
Okay, no, it, it's good. I just was trying to imagine. You know, there are some places where you see these things and it's, and it's kind of. Just doesn't look right. And I'm, so anyway, there you go.
Yeah, they're up to structural problems.
Thank you.
And I don't know if it really matters as far as zoning concerned, but it, there's almost no. No limit to how short a retaining wall can be. And still have it designed badly and still collapse.
Right.
I think I have one of those.
Materials don't last forever and ever. And they are moving around continuously too.
All right, so what do you want to do? Um, we're trying to get a regulation amendment submitted to you. Do you think we have enough? You, or do you need to see a few things one more time?
Well, we'd see it one more time and, and just say it's okay to go to press, you mean?
Right.
That's.
I saw you a drawing.
Right, okay, so let's, and it might not be the whole package. It just might be the few of the items that we still, you know, we were still revising. And maybe we submitted at a meeting, you know. With an agenda, a regular agenda. And. Look at it that way.
Might be, oh, you want to go with it in smaller pieces when.
No, I, I think instead of submitting the whole packet again, just submit the change, the changed pages.
Okay.
Right.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, just changes. Yeah, but in a format that it would go out to the public.
Right.
That's what we should see next time.
Right, and then we'll finally get to the whole packet together. And that'll be the complete packet for the, for the text amendment, the application and everything.
You think it'll be too much?
No, no.
Yeah, dazzle them with pages and nobody would say.
We did the whole regulation. This isn't, this isn't much.
No.
So. All right.
Yeah, so do you need anything more, Diane, or?
Not tonight. I don't think Deb, nope, nope, move to adjourn.
So we, our next meeting is, regular meeting is next Tuesday, 27th. So we have a motion to adjourn. Is there? Second it?
Second.
Moved and seconded. So we're.
Good night.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. Thanks for sticking with us.
Yeah, Diane or Deb, do you, do you have any way to get to the, there was a affordable housing seminar?
It's posted already. It's on, it's on the YouTube channel, yep.
How many people attended that?
No, but I've, I checked tonight and there's already seven or eight views, so people are watching it after the fact.
Which, where do you see it again or?
It, it's on the, it's on Grotton's YouTube channel. You can get to it through the town's website.
All right.
Um, and it's, and it has a lot of good information. It really is worth watching.
But I thought there was some, but it looks like they create, didn't look at our P O C D for some of the information.
This is, well, I mean, our P O C D is 2016, but this is just the base information. The meeting, meeting is less than an hour. It's worth taking a look.
Oh, yeah, no, I was, I was participated in. But it was interesting when they said they don't expect any population. Until for 10 years. Which I was surprised to see that.
Bruce, are you aware of the EV Club of Connecticut?
No, I'm not.
Check it online because apparently this is a bunch of guys who are just thinking about this stuff already too.
Yeah, all right, I'll write that down. I'll check it out.
You're the president.
Be the president.
My application.
They're local, okay.
All right, good night, everybody.
Thank you, guys.